First ballot is to approve the agenda.
Mayor, if we could add item number eight, closed session for personnel.
I make a motion, yeah, closed session for personnel, then see GS 1.3-368, 1151, A6.
Motion made by Councilwoman Griffin, second by Councilwoman McGowan, to add to our session, I'll vote.
Aye.
I'll vote.
I make a motion to approve the agenda, and as amended.
Thank you.
Motion made to approve the agenda with amendment made by Councilwoman Griffin, second by Councilwoman McGowan, I'll vote.
Aye.
I'll vote. We have our first public hearing, it's amended to amend the result, 107 meter drive, partial ad leave on 7J, 070058. And to rezone from industrial to commercial, I will.
Good afternoon. We have received an application for rezoning of 107 meter drive, 17J, 070058, 3.16 acres from industrial to commercial. On June 17th, the town council hallway vote here, and July 15th, the town council leave. Standards for approval, town council approval shall be based on the findings of facts and to include the planning board's statement of consistency and recommendations below listed. The findings of fact, that the future development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated to maintain or promote the public health, safety, and general welfare. Statement by applicant, I will do our own thing. That the use or development implies with our required regulations and the standards of the Wilsons' Neals Development Ordinance, and with all applicable regulations. Statement by applicant, to the best of my knowledge. That the use or development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated to not substantially injure the value of adjoining or voting property, or that the use or development is a public necessity. Statement by applicant, very true statement. That the use or development will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and be formed to the general plans for the land use and development of the town of Wilsons' Neals and its inhabitants. Statement by applicant, is certainly yes. Statement of consistency and reasonableness, this action is consistent with the town of Wilsons' Neals' future land use map, as this parcel is currently industrial. But commercial would provide more opportunities to the asset. This action is consistent with the Wilsons' Neals' comprehensive land use and master plan. It is reasonable as it will promote the growth of the town, provide job opportunities, and provide a service to citizens. It will retain the character of the community while supporting new development. Res zoning this parcel to commercial is reasonable for the following reasons. 5.2.2 Go to Plan for Growth. Harness the imminent southward expansion of the triangle of all managing growth of Dan Wilson's Neals. Encourage development first in areas where existing infrastructure and convenient proximity to town services are already provided. The first wave of the triangle's expanding business market in the Wilsons' Neals will be directed through application of the future land use plan and zoning map to areas where utilities and services are already provided. And 5.2.3 Retain our character. Preserve the small town with fuel of Wilsons' Neals while encouraging compatible visits growth through development and revised development standards and specifications. Planning board recommendations, planning board recommendation is for approval of this rezoning request. The planning board adopted the consistent statement as a rezoning is consistent with the future land use map. It is also consistent with comprehensive land use plan, UDO, and makes all development required. The town planning department recommendation, after review of the file, rezoning application and site plan, staff recommends approval for rezoning from industrial to Highway 70, I-42, commercial district, C70. Staff agrees with the planning board decision to approve rezoning. You close senior packet is a copy of the application that was submitted along with copies of the letter that was mailed out to all of the joint chartering owner. And the sign showing where it was posted, because we also ran into here the Johnson and Son for two to seven weeks as required by the state.
Wendy, I have a question.
Okay.
Do I ask you or do you ask the other one?
Either one.
And where is, where is the entrance when we, where is the entrance when we were probably, you've accessed it?
On the service road that is now meter drive, but will eventually be changed to this separate.
And it's a, it's a vehicle, a far lot, how many vehicles do they anticipate having on there at any given time?
They haven't said, but our UDO would allow up to 110. But that lot wouldn't hold that many cars.
These new vehicles or used vehicles?
From my understanding.
Beyond pickup truck, will there be any large, marginal vehicles in there or? Do they answer?
For my knowledge, no.
Nothing like that? Well, the, the, the sales office, will it be a permanent structure, brick and mortar, or will it be a mobile home trailer, or sales, anything or any type of thing that they they put on site that they do, do you see what I'm getting at? Where are they going to be these sales?
Um, my understanding is, and Mr. Ogle can correct me if I'm wrong, um, my understanding is that this will be used as a wholesale. Um. Like a wholesale lot, it won't be people going to the far lot without their cars, man. We, we are, we are rezoning, we are not dictating what we're putting on the bench. Whatever is agreeable for this lot, is what goes on. We are not deciding wanting to put up a house on earth, but we're doing the rezoning. Anything that we do, C70, that would be permitted under the C70 classification, UDO will be allowed upon this property in pre-plant.
So if you want to recall how the document is planned more.
You dance. That we need to make a decision on the rezoning from industrial to C70. That I don't know if anybody else has considered. I will close the public hearing on this rezon, around your last.
Well, I'm saying that it's consistent with the comprehensive land use plan from UDO to future land use plan. And recognizing the reason that the comprehensive land use plan, and future land use plan, and making a motion to approve the rezoning of 7J, 070058. I'll say first, please, and I'll say, I'll say it there.
Motion made by Councilwoman Griffin, second by Councilwoman McGowan, I'll vote.
Aye.
I'll vote. The next two parties, our next two, um, rezonations have been learned to be, uh, referred up. Um, the first one is an ordinance to amend some of the government's partial ad leave, 17K, 08, 026L. And it's going on. To the agricultural, I was trying to figure out what, from agricultural conditions, conditional rezoning.
This parcel was promptly done to add the applicant, Jay Barnes LLC, as the question of the rezon for add to mixed-use conditional zoning. The rezon application for this parcel originally went before the planning board, May 27th, 2023, and staff recommended to table the item and add conditions for rezoning. A new conditional rezon application was submitted July 14th, 2023, went before the planning board October 22nd, 2023. Planning board approved and recommended a conditional rezon going for the town council. The town council voted on and denied the conditional rezon on December 18th, 2023. Jay Barnes LLC waited the required four months before reapply. The conditional rezon went before the planning board, May 28th, 2024, was recommended for approval to go for the town council on June 17th, 2024. A public hearing was called on June 17th, 2024, for the July 15th, 2024, town council meeting. Standards for approval, town council approval shall be based on the findings of fact and to include the planning board's statement of consistency and recommendation. Both are listed on the following page. Findings of fact, that the user development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated to maintain or promote the public health, safety, and general welfare. Statement by applicant, project will not endanger public health, safety, or general welfare. That the use or development implies with our required regulations and standards of the Wilsons' Neals' Development Ordinance, and with all of, all of other applicable regulations. Statement by applicant, project will comply with our regulations and standards of the town of Wilsons' Neals. That the use or development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated to not substantially injure the value of adjoining or voting property, or that the use or development is a public necessity. Statement by applicant, surrounding property is compatible with proposed development. That the use or development will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and be formed to the general plans for the land use and development of the town of Wilsons' Neals and its inhabitants. Statement by applicant, surrounding property is compatible with proposed development. Statement of consistency and reasonableness, this action is consistent with the town of Wilsons' Neals' future land use map, as this parcel is projected to be residential. This action is consistent with the town of Wilsons' Neals' comprehensive land use and master plan. It is reasonable as it will promote the growth of the town, and it will retain the character of the community while supporting new development. Res zoning this parcel to mixed use is reasonable for the following reasons. Goal 2, 5.2.2. Objective one, harness the entire gap rate expansion of the triangle while managing growth, the Wilsons' Neals. Encourage development first in areas where existing infrastructure and convenient proximity to town services are already provided. The first wave of the triangle's expanding business market into Wilsons' Neals will be directed through application of the future land use plan and zoning map to areas where utilities and services are already provided. Strategy included, apply standards of the new UDO to ensure quality growth. Planning board recommendations, this application for rezoning went before the planning board on May 28th, 2024. Planning board recommendation is for approval of this rezoning request of file number CRZ 032064, from add to mixed-use conditional zoning with the conditions listed below. The planning board adopts statement of consistency with the future land use map, the comprehensive land use plan, and the unified development ordinance. The town planning department recommendations, after review of the file, rezoning application, site plan, staff recommends approval for rezoning from act to mixed use. Staff agrees with the planning board decision to approve rezoning with the following conditions. 52 foot wide lot with for single abandoned homes. A minimum 25 foot wide lot with for townhomes. A 20 foot setback for townhomes to allow for ample parking. One additional parking space for every three townhomes to allow for off-street parking. And here to off-chain is required by the planning department, town's engineer, and the fire marshal office. No distance in this development, and it's all cameras in strategic location in the development. Town council action. While adopting the statement of consistency with the comprehensive land use plan, UDO, future land use plan, and recognizing the reasonableness with comprehensive land use plan. UDO of each land use map, make an emotion to approve rezon of parcel 17K, 08, 026L, from add to the mixed-use conditional zone with the aforementioned condition. Or make an emotion to deny the rezon. You have in the packet, a copy of the application. A picture of where the property is posted. Copy of the letter that was mailed to all of the joint chartering owners. And a copy of the overall concept, ladies.
And this overall concept, ladies.
This is, this is for both parlors.
Mm-hmm. In addition, yeah.
Mr. Winston is here to do a presentation, um, about Johnston Law.
I say Johnston. Recognizing.
Yes, it's over, and it's another four.
First, I know that I am, uh, we're chair of the planning. Planning board already filled out a plan based class on this piece of property. They had every aspect that we have in our organs. I think the big things wrong and regional turn down my side. Y'all don't know what's in the woods. You gave them to the ones, maybe give them a reason. Big people have been over that to do everything they had to. They did have to do that, none of the planning to do. They have reached out to us and give away. And I will pick my own decision. I won't say how you started that. If you do, the town is open for lawsuits. And families. Don't have to be in line with other families, but they have been in time. No reason to come back. And I'm speaking this from both pieces of part of the land. But in the future, if we send something, it has been researched, and researched, and researched. And we have sent to you this right. If you don't think it's right, get over inside reading. That's what we have to do. And that way, if we want to get slapped amazing, we'll get me a really a lot. It's very, it's hard. With the people being, 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 and yes, we are, don't get lost there. Because you don't, George, we can't, look, I think. It's not really, that it got, it got.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and Mr. Chairman, members of the town council. My name is Jason Wenzel, I'm an attorney on behalf of the town, and this is following me briefly, but with that introduction, with that introduction, uh, I want to give you a brief overview, not going to rehash everything that you've heard. Um, at the outset, I can approach and stand up.
Mr. Wenzel, do you have a copy of the town floor?
I do, yes, ma'am. I have plenty of copies.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, again, Jason Wenzel, I'm an attorney in Smithfield, Maryland, Mr. Wenzel, uh, getting there, uh, address 102 South Third Street, Smithfield, Maryland, 27577. Um, this project really doesn't need any further introduction, I don't think, so I'm not going to go back through and rehash the procedural history that he's already been laid out. But a couple of points, especially with that, uh, recent commentary about the order, that's what I would like to put this on. So, um, this project comes back before you after the planning board is, uh, just unanimous to be approved back on May 28th. Um, and again, it's a rezon from agricultural mixed use. The property location, I think, is important here, and the property is at the Indian Jones Drive, Johnson Farm Drive, northeast portion of town, and particularly in your growth opportunities map. Sure, all of you know, but, um, it's up here in this corner, and I point that out particularly because it's bounded on east by Moose River, so there's not going to be any further development going there. But from since last time to this time, there is going to be a supposed camping park right there, it's handed formally inside news about both the middle school and the high school that are going to be located within walking distance of this development. So, uh, part of what Mr. Winston's going to, presentation is going to show is that proximity and the walking path that is designed to, uh, connect the amenities that are associated with the project, with the school. As does the UDO itself. You just heard the process about what the planning board goes through developing its statement of consistency and reasonableness. That's essentially the same standard you got, okay? Um, theirs is under section 5.3 of your ordinance, uh, yours is under section 5.4. So what does that mean? What, what, what is the, the ordinance trying to get to when it says consistency and reason? Well, consistency again is with your growth opportunities in the future development, right? It's ideal, this location is ideal to minimize that traffic, both coming in and out, but also because of the river invading that boundary, but also for the proximity of the school. Uh, the, your ordinance under section 16.1.1.3 specifically allows for phase development. I think that's important here, because of the history of this project, you will note on some of these maps, you'll see this is phase three of Johnson Farms, right? It's not often prudent to go in there and take a very large traffic plan and develop the whole thing at one time, right? From a developer's perspective, sure, that helps manage costs, but it also helps save more orderly growth of the development to progress. Mr. Winston will talk more about both that history is to how it got here, but I think particularly your ordinance recognizes that under, again, section 16.1.1.3. Simply put, the timing is right now to come back before you, considering the explosive growth in your own, uh, planning director's statement as to managing that growth that is coming. The, uh, again, all these are consistent with the existing plans and development plan and long-term plans that you had for your attempt. Secondly, again, consistency and reasonable. What is reasonable? Well, that's good judgment, that's what's fair, that's what's practical. And I think when you take into consideration not only the proximity, but the growth that you're experiencing, I think both of those, both the planning board's statement of consistency and reasonableness would be a good guide for your consideration in the document, and similarly, under your development order in section 5.3.3. Says the town council should do four things, it should weigh the decision of the recommendation of the planning board. It should consider the recommendation of the, the administrator of the town. It should consider the comments made in the public hearing, which is, again, why you go through that process of sending out documents and posting, and giving everybody, including the folks behind me, if they wish to speak, the opportunity to come up here and tell you what their concerns are, not just to submit it in a letter, but actually to come here and do it. That's part of the reason for what I included in the, the most in the memorandum that's on my comments here today, supplement the record. Uh, and lastly, for you all, consider any relevant additional information that you have with all your planning meetings that you do in, in, um, familiarity with your ordinances in the direction for your town. So, one last thing I wanted to mention about the ordinance, and you've heard this several times, we mentioned as a conditional rezon. What is that for your ordinance to find? When you're section 5.4, it says, uh, including where, Madam Mayor, you mentioned in the last one we just heard, and your decision normally on your rezoning is just rezoned, yes or no, right? You're not getting into what to use the property. In a conditional rezon, you'd have some of those other factors that normally come into play, and your ordinance under subsection D of 5.4.1.3 says some of those by illustration of limitation would be A, the location of the property, B, the number of dwelling units, the location of, see, the location of supporting facilities such as parking lots and driveways. Buffer areas, the timing of the development, the height structure, right? All those go into the determination for, in reasonable and consistent, is the conditions that are being put on this rezoning, are they reasonable, right? Well, we've got to factor in those factors that are going to be considered, um, on, on the ultimate development of the land. So, you already heard, the, the town plan has weighed it out the period under your statute 5.3.1.4, got to wait four months to come back before you, that's what they done. On behalf of the applicant, I would like to call up Mr. Winston who certainly can tell you anything you would like to know about the land in general. And if you have other questions for me, if you have a question for me now, I'm happy to answer it, but if not, I'm happy to come back up.
If you might have a question, please.
Thank you.
My third, Councilwoman Johnson, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to talk about this law. Um, my name is Bob Winston, and I am a, um, lifelong member of, uh, this large community in Wake County, Johnson County, I grew up in, but, but my grandparents farm, uh, like, uh, on the down, I don't even want to say around, but, uh, so we spent summers, you know, on the farm, down, you know, in the fields, we had fun doing all that, so, um, I have a great appreciation of Johnson County, the heritage of Johnson County, had a couple of terrible areas of Johnson County, and so I'm in this as a child, but, and I, I felt like. But we're here today to talk about this property that is, as been said already, is the last phase of a long 30-year project uh, that had been planned in, in Johnson County, and, and specifically, it was not in Wilsons' Neals until here, until we asked you all to annex with the idea that this was going to be, uh, the end result, because we felt as well um, it should be a part of Wilsons' Neals, um, because of the, because of a lot of reasons, but one being the fact that, uh, Wilsons' Neals will get a tremendous tax benefit from this project. But let me just kind of give you a little bit of background, and I'll take it through, if you got, if anybody, if you all have the presentation time, I, I'll just, if I could, if you indulge for a few moments, uh, I'll go through and we can talk about this. Um, in the eighties, this project was going, it wasn't full of, it's going to be an ethanol plant. For many of you who've been here for that law and, uh, and know that that was part of the plan a long time ago, that fell through, and so, so we didn't really, obviously didn't, didn't go through. But in the early nineties, the owners of the property, the those who bought the property, did a deal with Johnson County. What that was, was we'll give you 100 acres, but we want to develop this property, and we want all the entitlements that were required to develop a housing development on this, all the rest of the property. So the trade, and it was a trade, it's funny, but it mainly entitles the trade back. So that's the value of that property today, that property still has over 100,000 gallons a day of sewer, of, of sewer capacity that is, uh, that is assigned to the remaining part of this property. So, so we go all the way back 30 years, so this is a 30-year genesis really for, for this product. So, so we go all the way back thirty years, so this is a thirty-year genesis really for, for this property. So, um, the way I was, um, I was asked to be a part of the, of, of the project, and it didn't go well, and some people who I knew, uh, didn't do a good job of it, and quite rapidly, too. And I can tell that I can remember, like, many years ago, standing in the town hall, this is fifteen, twenty years ago, Mayor Byrd was there, and the chief of the town was there, and, and the place, Johnson Farms, which is phase two, was a disaster, a total disaster. It was scary, the, um, the chief of police, and I told him, make room for him, sir, and then, chief of police dropped on the floor a sheet of all the, all the calls he'd been in the last twelve months, and he rolled it across the room, and it just went on and on. And so, that was what, near the deal. It went belly up, and I took it over, um, and I was appalled, I was appalled. Houses were trampled, selling twenty-five thousand dollars to people who had invested a hundred grand into their houses, had lost everything. And I mean, these were people with limited means, they lost everything. I inherited the whole development, I inherited all the land, I inherited everything. Um, so first thing that Brent Weston ideas, we got work, and we, we had forty hours, that's another, we had forty greater ones, so they were section eight, a lot of them, just air, some burned out. So we, we put a bunch of money into it, and we put a bunch of our own time. I would say myself, playing grass, nothing grass, um, digging ditches, doing all kinds of stuff, but we, you know, we had a good time, but here's what happened. And I think Mayor Byrd can tell, she, she lived it, we turned it around. We took it from a drug-infested place where people had been murdered, many people told us we couldn't do it, turned it around. I just looked today, there is a house for sale, for three hundred and ten thousand dollars inside of Johnson Farms. And to think about that ten years ago, twelve years ago, to forty-five thousand dollars each time. So, I'm most proud of that because of what we ran, we, we owned those properties, many of them sold, we got down, but, you know, that was, that was a great thing. So the next thing is what we're talking about today, and that is, what's the bottom of things? Two thousand and six, he was ready to go. All, he was ready to build, had every single permanent meeting, uh, D O T, and the, the city, the county approved it, uh, and I got working on spending, ready to go. Well, we all know that in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. But, you know, when you look back on it, you can say, ah, what's happened for a reason? We sat and we waited, we viewed it as a wonderful place, we bring our families into, you know, hunt, you know, I'd come down on weekends, garden, do all kinds of stuff, so we had a great time doing all that. But one of the things that it did do is allow us to understand the way it had been changed. So, if you look at Johnson Farms, and I was over there this afternoon because I'm always trying to make sure, you know, everybody, the place stayed real nice, so everybody could hold it down. There is problems, the yards are so big, the big, big, big yards, it's, you know, it's just way too much land, and that's our big problem, yards. We changed this one to where he studied everything that, the best, the best, what's the greatest, latest thing that people have done, what is the best way people wanna live, and that's what we designed. Now, I would say, we designed something to start with, and we had to come back, had to come back. So, she was very tough on us, and made us continue with comeback, and changing, changing, which was fine, because, you know, there were good reasons for it, so, you know, because we had to meet the, the P D O and other reasons, but, but we did. Um, and so what I'll say to, uh, in addition to, to all that I've said is, uh, we're so excited about the project, we have spent, I cannot tell you how many thousand dollars, you know, as I've said many, I did this for a living, I go home, because I spent so much time on it, and I'm so passionate about it. I made twenty acres away, and I put a confirmation easy in the law, and it's up my degree. Johnson County has control of it. I've been working for twenty years in Johnson County, because I want to do first, my founding foundation, leave behind, and I signed with Johnson County Parks and Recreation together in Florida. It's gonna be for all Johnson County residents. We are gonna build a pasture park, kids, so they can go, get out the woods, anybody wants to walk, it's gonna be huge, all those old world, um, oak trees that are down there, it's just gonna be fantastic. In addition to that, we worked with Johnson County Parks and Recreation, they received, recently, in the last three, they received a four-point, two-point million dollar fat ring. They put a green from the park that I'm going to build, all the way to the new high school and the middle school, be gone, down paths to a hundred acre park that they're going to have as well. So the land they bought, so they have a hundred and ten acres left open, and they're gonna create a park for that. So they will have connection to any, any, uh, Wilson's Mills residents will be able to come through the development, go right straight, get on that freeway, and go all the way down to that hundred and twenty acre park, and go the other way to twenty-one acre, to the plenty of the park. In addition, they wanted Johnson County to try and get the, the mountain of sea dragon coming through, working for Fire Park Road to try and help them, the awkward, uh, we're all, the financial, uh, capability, we will help, uh, acquire land, but work and train the land in service. And these are not, this has nothing to do with our development, they can all change what we do in our development. I'm doing it because I think it's the right thing to do, it's about a sense of place, it's about what's left of it. When we leave, if we have a bit of another, uh, two, uh, I'm ready to leave, we want to make sure that what we leave behind is something that's right. And that's, that is the most important thing of us. So, I'll leave it there, uh, I say thank you very much for your consideration. We're here, we've been here forever, uh, we will never know where we work in Johnson County, and some other projects, um, when I say other projects, I mean, other projects on open space and land and public good projects that, uh, we think are really important because of where Johnson County is, it's coming, and we have to make sure that we don't, there is, so, thank you, Eric.
Mr. Winston, I have one quick question.
Yes, sir.
You, you mentioned a hundred, uh, and, and in passing, and I tried to write it down, I may have skipped over something, but you mentioned a one hundred thousand gallon sewer capacity, when, when was that?
Nineteen ninety-four, it, it was over a hundred, it's a hundred, it's left.
That's what I'm getting at, what have you got now?
Over a hundred.
Over a hundred?
It's, uh, I don't, yes, I can, it's about thirty years.
See, three hundred and five, but while, what you have to remember is that this subdivision was on the books by Johnson County. We were the main family town, we had to accept it.
I got you.
It's, it's been on books now.
Well, you also have, um, water regards and other things that, you know, all, I mean, that, it's, it's, that's the trade, the, uh, the work, the work, so we talk.
Uh, once you finish this, then you're through with that, I don't mind.
Yeah, this will take a while, this will take a while, this will fade inside, it's a phase, um, but yeah.
Is there more in that period?
The only way to John Denver, I don't swim, I don't live, I don't talk, you know, it's like, I don't, you know, uh, I don't fuck with you, you know.
Do you have any associations with the Johnson County Pepper Company?
I do, um.
Can you tell me what's in that building with all fencing and barbing?
The bars, the bars, yes, yeah.
Oh, I need to know, that would be a great, it's a big, but I think, and I don't see anybody come in and out.
It, it is, it's my, it's where I come on weekends.
That, that's, I, sorry, now from that time, with anyone else, we should do, we have, we have.
Let me go ahead and ask it, I would, I'd say it'd be the butt of everything, right? Uh, traffic. I, I see Jones, yeah, Jones Road coming in and out, and, and I see, uh, Johnson, the, the access road to Johnson Park. And this is five hundred and some odd houses, you know, if that's the average of two point five, that's, that's quite, that's fifteen hundred folk, that's a lot of park. Do you think that those two can handle it, the Johnson Parks and Jones Road?
I, I actually do, and I think we had a study, uh, we, we did, I mean, we wouldn't, we would not, we would not, I think another thing that helped, uh, just the fact that the industry, my, so if you're going to out of there, or you're going to notice it, you know, I could go, you, you, you could walk us, and so. So, uh, so that's, you know, I think that, that does help.
Would you consider, uh, rather than folks, all these folks coming in, going through Johnson Park, all, all, all along the lines, a roundabout that would help slow things down, and, and, we was talking about it earlier, so I haven't given that much thought, but roundabout seems to be an answer to a lot of problems with traffic.
I will say, you know, I, I will just say, if, if it's improvement, we do have a roundabout inside the park, there is a roundabout inside, if it's an improvement, um, absolutely, we do anything that makes an improvement, and if, if, you know, the traffic, but I, I listen to traffic engineers, I, I.
I'll certainly not traffic engineer if I were to shut down once somebody slapped around, so, we'll let it go at that.
No, 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 I think the suggestion is fine, I mean, like I said, you know, we, we're, we're open to, we want it to be so, we want people to say this was a great idea.
I want, my, my interest in the end of the long term here is that Wilson's Mills, and that certainly is the large part of Wilson's Mills, that contains, it's, let's call it Southern Charm, if you will. And I'm just wondering how five hundred and ninety-seven homes are literally done to, you know, how you can blend that into a little town, and we're, we're trying to focus as we grow, and our new town hall, we're trying to focus on, um, tradition, if you will, and, and grow for sure, but, you know, this is a different kind of growth, so how do you see it fitting in?
Yeah, so.
I mean, I've seen the pool with all the walking through, so.
That's, it's a sense of place, it's how you create a sense of place, there's a couple, it's one is what do you build, what is it that you build, how do you manage that, uh, Johnson Farms, it was a, it was hard, it was a, it was a song, it was a song. So it's how do you manage what you start, so you gotta stay on top, so that's, that's part of it. Then the other thing is, you created some place, so we've got two legs, we got, as you said, we have the water person, we, we got four, I mean, we've got this incredible deal, we've worked very hard with, uh, Johnson County Parks and Recreation, we have the park, I mean, think like, you got a twenty acre park, these kids, whoever live in there are adults, you get to, you get to walk, here's the great thing about that. You're not trespassing on somebody else's park, it's a whole park, so you can go down there, do anything you wanna do, and that's the key, it's the kids, I don't want the kids going in there and do what I do, you know, down here, jump, yeah, you know, beating out the woods, and, so, that's what I'm trying to do, and I agree with you. If we blow that, you know, but we're sure, and, and it's gonna take work, and if you can't walk like, gotta stay, and, and we will.
I've got one other question. You talked about the roads, not being in the past year, we're building twenty-five hundred houses, twenty-five hundred two hundred houses, we're building middle street. They're the ones that have to provide the roads, which is gonna be pretty close to your roads. How is that going to, what they, what they're gonna build, the roads and the infrastructure for people to get to the school, how's that gonna impact your development? Because I know you're, you're gonna say that we're the people from your development, and that's one of the things that I like about this development, one of the key things for me is how long does a kid gonna have to be on the school bus to go to school? And in this development, their middle school and high school, they're not gonna have to be on.
Yeah, we do that happen.
And, and even if they're, and when they're in the middle, uh, elementary school, the elementary school may be two miles from where they live. So the kids that's gonna be in that development, they're not gonna be on the school bus, their parents are not gonna have to worry about that, put them on the school bus. They can either let them walk to school, let them ride, ride their bike to school, or they can, um, drop them off at school, but they're not gonna have to be on the bus. That's the number one thing that I think makes this development what it should be. And, and as long as you can, uh, get your roads right and, and comping and deal with what the D O T is in the name of the high school roads, so they're gonna have, really, you might need to change some of the roads, or buses, they're all gonna get the, the high school road, and just give me your, just give me your.
We're giving them, we're giving them, we have to do all sites, so we're gonna have to do some road group that's all site, so that's already agreed to the D O T, we did a study, and then, and I.
I have something that may help, here's a letter director to the town from the D O Ts, now, it's the date of November of last year, but it addresses some of the questions that both, uh, councilmen just, just raised, you're having, I'm willing to introduce that and have that as part of your record.
The traffic study hasn't done, so.
It's been done, it's been negotiated, it's.
I have one, I have one question. Um.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there not an exit, uh, will we put a water?
Not in the clear water, there's water free, there's, there's one in Johnson Farms and one in Denver. I mean, it, it is.
That, that, that boss, so that's why I'm sorry to be able to talk about that.
And, and that, we would, and, and, you know, that's a lot of, like, we're right there, you know, the surface mostly, what's, we here, come out, we want flowers, and if there's been one thing that's best.
I remember that.
But, but, yeah.
Okay, I think it's more figured that one to be, to be, so.
We also have a question for you.
Yeah, I want a question.
Yeah, we have any questions?
I, I would just say that, that, that I, I, I've looked at all this stuff, and, and I understand that the continuous development of the, of, of the acreage. My concern as a lifelong person who lived in Wilson's Mills, is when we're talking about managing growth, we never wanna talk about traffic, never. That's part of managing growth, and, and before long, we're gonna have so many subdivisions, and that, that, you're gonna have two-way roads, and, and I don't, look, D O T builds roads, not Johnson County school system. Johnson County D O T, or North County D O T, had to build a road, those are the, it's definitely taken fourteen hundred years to complete. They, and the same two roads, two-way roads, two-way roads, I just want to run out, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. They're not gonna make any improvements, we just want to understand this.
Which one are you talking about?
Every one.
Well, I, yeah, there, there's going to be a turn lane on, uh.
And, and D O T is good with a turn lane, they love a turn, they love, and when we built this church here, they didn't require us to do a turn lane, so since this church was erected, they started a turn, they love. However, if we're not caring in managing, man, five point two point two, go, if we're not caring in managing this growth, and considering traffic work in this town, we're gonna have subdivisions where it takes you fifty minutes to get to a location to be in, so.
Couldn't agree more.
Okay, so that's what I'm looking at from, that I'm just wanting, but that's what I'm looking at as a lifelong resident of this town. You know, you, is, is the, the hundred thousand capacity wing, is that enough to take care of, of all the homes that, of townhomes and all the pieces of those?
Uh, well, pretty much, or it is, or it's not.
It sounds like. Quite a choice, but you gotta, you got twenty two.
So, so we're, we're looking up here, and that, that, that's important details for me, as, as a council. To, to, you know, we're managing growth and, and we're being asked to resolve something that we don't even have sewer capacity for a complete project. Well, we're being asked to, uh, pretty completely project.
But, but, but let's, let's, let's make sure we understand. Bottom line, there's a difference between capacity, the, the ability to get it. That's not an issue. It's, do we very few people have bottom line? We have mainly bottom line.
So to get it is not an issue. Now, that's not what we've been told for the past three years.
Well.
Because as I understand it, as a council member, there is no capacity for a county.
Well, because, so, so we talked to, we talked to, to John, who's in bed, about her lane. He went through, we could talk to her about this law.
So, so let me interrupt. So by the time you get management development passed.
And they, they're going to circle up the home, and by the time we get the back end, they'll have the new plant, the new station, all that done. So it's not.
I have to add something.
No, no, no.
But I should have cut to the chase and start with, by the time you're finished with your final phase, you, you're saying that that, that capacity, you.
And what I mean to have, for that, she just said, we don't know, you do know that, you know, once you have the homeless coverage, it's gonna take you more than a ton.
Well, just understand that my goal is even, if, if, if there's such a capacity, you're not gonna do the structure. The council's not gonna let you. However, my concern is, is, is my main concern is managing growth for vehicle traffic. Um, in, in this town, because before we know, and you look back at what this council has approved over, over the past probably three years. We're gonna be, we're gonna be at a, at a point where we think that the stoplight at, at Wilson's Mill Road seven was nice. Waiting fifteen to twenty minutes to get across. So you don't think that's a blessing? So, so, so we didn't have to make sure we managed the growth, and we had to think outside the box. That's the reason that I mentioned today about roundabout. Is that a four way stop sign. They love four way stop signs. I, I think that we do.
I'm all around, but I can tell you that that's not a lot. You said four way stop and go roundabout. It's, it is dynamite. So. We, we have a roundabout in this, in this. I agree with you a hundred percent. We're not, we're not saying to, to, to answer your question about the traffic. Traffic can kill a good thing, right? I mean, you know, you got a good thing going, traffic can kill it. What I think about this particular idea, because obviously I'm that, so take some weapons off front. Um, but you gotta think things where the best placement, what, how do they position themselves to really get the most signage? And so I'll just be adding all the things, all the amenities, the park, the two parks, right? You have one and a half the park that you can ride like two, three minutes. You've got a twenty acre park that's literally right there. You got the river, so we're gonna try to have it see, you know. Then you got the high schools. You got the, you know, the games at night and all the things that are gonna be going on at the high school and the low school. So I think from a standpoint. Where, and you know, it's in your long range plant and, you know, it's in your, it's in your plan at the beginning. But I think of all the lives, this is the place to do it. And what we're trying to do is do it right. And what little things we did, not in time, we walked. Brent and I walked, and Brent, we circled trees and we moved roads. We literally moved roads and plant to save certain specimen of us, because most of what's there is cleared up time. You can see it. It's, you know, it's, it's just, you know, it's twenty year old, thirty year old pipe. But there's gorgeous, they go, and you can't, you just can't replace it. So you gotta say, so we're doing.
I, I appreciate you entertaining my, my question.
Oh, no, absolutely.
But I, I definitely understand your, your point of view as a fellow.
Well, and I'm not a developer, but just so you know, I'm a guy and a deal with Brent and now Pyroni. And I'm a hotel guy. I build hotels. That's what I do. And I, and so, as I said, but I will tell you that I'm actually, it's fair.
Ninety, ninety hotels in twenty three states, Brent.
Uh, and I'm better too.
Yes, I am.
I know you're.
Thank you very much. Well, I'd like to say you're welcome. Not only I can, I'm not easily intimidated. So let me continue. And I, I think some of the council has a little more questions. I'll finish it up with this. You certainly don't have to stand there and listen to the rant.
No.
I had two pages of questions. So I sat down and I reviewed all this week, and I'm going, why, 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 just why that? And contrary to what some people have said tonight, we have done our homework as council. And we have looked at the ordinances, and we do rely upon others to tell us something about ordinances, but not in public and not trying to shame us in public. Let me continue with the statement here. About six years ago, maybe five years ago, this is a quick story. I was at a presentation, um, where we were discussing, the citizens were invited in, we were discussing what was, um. What was going to happen to Wilson's Mills. And two questions were asked that I recall vividly. And one of them was, what do you like about Wilson's Mills? And everybody would give a little answer. He'd put it up on the light board and everything else. Then the question was asked, what do you not like about Wilson's Mills? And it got real quiet until the gentleman said, I don't like. Nor the risk coming in, or outside of Johnson Park, coming in here and trying to change our values. I let that slide as a witness in five years. I've never forgotten. That's why I can quote for better. I'm not afraid to quote tonight. And I'll never be afraid to quote. When they talk about Southern values, I am from the north. But I think I'm about Southern, as is about anybody else in here right now, to the value of this town. And what I do, I do the good of the town. So when I ask you that question about Southern values. That's where it comes from, sir. Okay? That's where it comes from, because I want this town to retain it. Now, if you'd like to take a seat, you may. I don't, I'm not gonna say anything else on that. But I will say this, you can be assured, sir, that we are going to pass this tonight. You can be assured of that. Everyone, you can be assured. Now, with that said, because we know what the ordinance said, and we know that if we deny it again tonight, we're gonna be, is it Spencer and Spencer? I've done my homework, sir. We're not gonna meet Spencer and Spencer somewhere. And let me tell you the quote, in the town of Wilson's Mills, if it goes to court. Like this gentleman said, he had ninety hotels, twenty three states. It's a big, big company. It's very successful. And I'm proud of him for that. That's the American way. I say go for it. But we can't afford to beat you in court. No way. Okay? You, we would be, we would be having something that's beyond our budget, beyond our means. I don't think you'd do that purposely, but it would, it, it would ring a bell. So with that said, sir, I will say this. I'm going to address the folks at Wilson's Mills right now, and I'm going to say, I am sorry. I apologize for what we did and what we're going to have to do tonight. And I'm, and I'm, I'm committed to what this gentleman says and, and, and the project that's coming out. And I think being, being from this area and, and, and loving it as you all do. You'll understand where I'm coming from when I say, I am sorry to the folks that signed a petition that came here last night that were sort of vocal. Let me, let me go back to quote you here. Section D one of Wilson's Mill ordinance, five point three point three, required town council to A, for one, consider recommendations made by the planning boards. Recommendations, not directives. Recommendations only. Recommendation by the administrator for the planning board, the comments made at public hearing, and any other relevant additional information. And that is what we did last night. We did not have the ordinance in front of us to sit there and go, oh, my God, look at this. We can't do this. We did this, and I'm the one who can quote that we denied. I made the motion. So, yeah, I'll take the heat for it. We didn't have all the facts in front of us, and we did a lot on the emotion and standing. Do you not want me to, okay. And, and I'd like to, and, and Southern values, okay? That's why we did it. And those folks were happy, and I was happy. And then when we found out that we really can't do it, I don't wanna say I'm not happy. I'm happy for you all. And I'll go along with it. I'll stand up and I'll fight for you guys, just like I fought for those folks that are sitting back there right now. And once again, ladies and gentlemen. I don't know if I'm speaking for the rest of the town council, but we can't fight this, and I am very sorry. Thank you, council.
Yeah, and I, I do want to say, make a couple of clarification. If you can tell the folks on that, I'd like to clarify. Um, and as I said, that's more, make sure that everyone in this council is, um, making the appropriate considerations of the standard. And, uh, like role playing in reason like this. Um, so. State statute does have a handful of directives for a additional reason such as this at the town U G S. And at the bottom of the, in its final analysis, we give a legislative decision of this board to approve or deny this action. And just because, and I, I have no discretion at all, and basically, or any. But I did want to just make sure that everyone here understands what the standards is, that you have the discretion. As a legislative body, make a legislative decision, that you're being in the best interest of the town to approve or deny this reason. And in so doing, you should consider the recommendation of the planning board. Of all due respect to the planning board, it is a recommendation. The town is required to consider it, but it not have to follow. The town also requires consideration its master comprehensive land use plan and land use plan map. Now, you can say about that in the tier of the case, what the planning board found, what town staff has, has to read. These are guiding, these are guidance points for the town council's decision. However, in the final analysis, town council should consider all the materials that have been presented to it, all the public comments, which there should will be some to come. In making this decision, uh, that would be crystal clear in the town council that you, there may be repercussions, you may be challenged by, by the department for some of this reason. But that you are entitled to, to vote how you believe should be decided. Um, I did want to make an additional comment about the materials that were handed up by the county towards the, the applicant. I did address his, his, um, comments, but was he handed it up? And it is, um. Characterized as a motion in limine, arguing for the exclusion of evidence that is in the town's packet. I thought the county should address it. And I recommend that the town council reject the, the motion in limine and consider the evidence that was offered, that was in the packet. The, the opponents who, who submitted a letter, um, in opposition, that that should be considered under the town. U D G, which allows town council to consider any other relevant additional information, although it may not be, uh, being presented in public comment, it is still, uh, relevant to this reason. So I think you should consider that in making the decision, and in addition, all the other, um, public comment that we give here today. And, and finally, since there is quite a bit of discussion about this, I, I suggest that you, unlike the prior ones, that you move to approve or deny. And then we can separately make the motion to do the consistency and reasonable statement, because sometimes it gets kind of difficult to say, oh, we can separate them. So I suggest we do the panel's say. Which one are bringing a question? I believe you should have, yes. And the mic so everybody can hear.
There are other things that will come. Okay, if anyone else has, thank you.
My name is Paul again. I'm in the farm. My name is Paul. I'm on the farm in the country. I have a lot, yeah, my own, and so. My, my root concern is about the now traffic. I'm looking, I'm looking. Um, now, root, can't root concern, uh, park and all those places, so the, on the side of the sides. So I'm originally three hundred and seven units, now I'm this. And if you look at what the proposal is, what the whole is pricing is, they're gonna be up still compared to what Johnson Farms, they, they do. Well, I think Jones Road and Big Time Road, they, they have now. So I'm concerned about the traffic. Um, there's a discussion about ten day hand. Well, I look at what the D F P standard has, Jones Road. When I hear a mission, it's a eighteen foot block. And by D F P standard, that remains the same as the, the, the part of the yesterday. If we had six hundred rooms, and you have cars that wanted to leave in and out, well, that's, uh, plenty of, again. So that's almost trouble, what that road is designed for. So, you know, I know that there are anybody's, uh, opinions, difference, who, uh, think, they do the most for us. But again, I think, oh. Where the passing thousands, I don't think they can go further than that though. There was a discussion about, you know, access to the new stores. Where if you look at the map, it's a disaster, walking right, there's no road to go from the subdivisions to the store. So I, you know, right now, for the past year, um, with the road closing down, or in, all the pond roads. It's basically been a head in the road. I think traffic lives up to them, of the condo. And there's a lot of garbage that those two communities create. So our neighbors, we go out and pick up at least a bucket of trash each week. You know, on, on page two, I got a, I got a item there that. There's construction on Wilson Mill Road, I think from thirty eight hundred, I'm building right now, things going on in the box and the big ones. But all the heavy equipment traffic has been going up and down the road. A lot of dump trucks and other heavy equipment. And when they started building that subdivision, we started getting poppers above the town road. And that's a picture of the one that right next to the park. They tried, they tried to repair it three times, but with the heavy traffic and that construction still going, the problem keeps coming back. So I went out and measured Wilson Farm Road. It's twenty one, it meets the, the standard. Jones Road does. And, you know, the Paul's Farm Road, you've seen this type of damage. I can just imagine what Jones Road was gonna see, if it even would be apparent. So. You know, I've heard the turnabout or discussion about, hey, what I fear about these lights. Why would a roundabout, these folks being in the corner of the park, and then take up forty nine hundred? I don't think that. That, that's why I'm hoping that it's not here. I guess, I think it can move on. But. I don't think we're able to.
While we're waiting on, on, on someone else, when, have you researched about the width of the road for that amount of traffic? Cause it brings up about one that.
That's in town.
John Road is not a state, they train the road. Steve, Tony, Steve, the town, it's the statement. Yeah, statement.
It's the N C B O T road. And the the uh the O T road, we um use the traffic impact analysis, the T I. Is what we use, because we don't have a common sense for the common transportation plan right now. I do look at what county has in there transportation plan and John Road is not on theirs.
What what can we do to change that? I mean, I could I could down John Road. Since all of this started, I I go down there quite a bit and look at it, check it out.
Adopt a common transportation plan that we could be able to go through because because I.
If we adopt that, I mean, of course.
It's probably that that's something that.
All right, if we get that, if we get that rolling, the John Road is not going to be able to handle it. I agree with this gentleman. That's where they're all going to go, that's where the trucks go. Do something, okay.
I I I'm I'm a little confused, David. So if it's what he's saying, the four hundred cars per day on the on and and the road is only the width for four hundred cars per day. So you're telling me that the that D O T said if if that they're not abiding by those rules?
If I remember correctly, and I do not have a T I A in front of me. But if I remember correctly, the only two improvements that had to be done of this particular subdivision. Was a turn lane for Wilson's Mill Road on the main street. The permanent background to usle pond road. And a turn lane going in some Johnson Farms from usle pond road. That was the only two road improvements that were all that T I A for Johnson Farm, if our people correct.
So so the the turn lanes. Of course, usle and man, we could have, we have railroad route. They're not going to grant a turn.
No.
So is the turn lane going to be on this gentleman's property?
No, uh, we're talking about at the going into Johnson Farm. Not on John Road.
Off of.
Yeah. And turning on the main street for Wilson's Mill Road.
But no turn lane on John.
No.
I I I I was still just confused if if what he's saying, and I'm not saying what he said is correct. But if he says that that it only due to the width of eighteen foot, it's only at a capacity of four hundred cars per day. But yet they've done a traffic study and they said, well, it can handle more than more than four uh more than four hundred cars a day. I mean, it seems like, I mean, I'd say more on there, maybe. If either if either what he's saying is correct, eighteen foot, it's four hundred cars a day. So are we saying there's only going to be four, or they saying there's only going to be four hundred cars a day? There again, I go back, I the the developer stuff is that that that's theirs. My my concern is is for the town residents, this 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 quiet matter of of cars that we're going to have. That we knows. That we know D O T, and if they're saying that eighteen foot is only available for four hundred, four hundred cars a day, and they've already approved. Based on fifteen hundred cars or whatever the number of cars for.
They've split the number of cars between the two, since they're working it out.
Uh, so they said four hundred on this road, eight hundred on that one. So yeah, I get it, no, I I understand. I mean, that we don't have any say, that's the state.
That right, that is the transportation.
That's all I need to know.
You have a common transportation plan, there's nothing.
How how do we get that changed? This is, it's great to talk, I think you guys understand.
That's something that we'll we'll check, I'll check into.
Would you do that?
I was checking.
I think it's very, very.
What we could do with grants and stuff, we don't have.
Okay, thanks, that's very important.
Anyone else watching this thing on this video?
I want to express Mr. Winston, Mr. Wes, the one of the ones that voted on the opposed in class, and one of the reasons I voted. Yes, I was under the impression that I was. That Billy had done. Uh, after I voted the name, I looked at the weeks. And we'll be explaining that John he has already had directly stored in the past, and will be from him. That's where my. Um, that's for the traffic study and all that. They've already got the place and the state has already approved it, so we really don't have. Anything we can do, but hope it's correct. Hey David, just like I told you earlier. You know, we'll bring the. I voted for your subdivision when it read coming, that I want to know it. But I wanted Winston Mill to be a small community. Winston Mill is not a small community. Those they like me, I gotta make their grass, I like when my mom won't get made the grass. But moving in now, they get push mom won't make one slide, and they're like, ooh, I could hide yard, that's tall. That's that's where we're at, man, so.
And 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 I I I and you're right, I mean, it's not. I've been 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 here for years, and you're right, it's not. And and anybody that thinks that that you can get on on this board or any board. And stop growth as long as teams across the nation are dead wrong. Because we've been legislated that. They said you can't do this, you can't do that. And and small towns. Are running into just what we're dealing with tonight. So if anybody in town, those of you who haven't spoke, that are going to speak, those that are watching. If you think that 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 you want to change something. Don't come to me, go to Donald Burger. Go to Jim Ozon, they're on the planning board. If you want to try to change something, go to them. Because they're right, we don't know, we don't deal with the planning issues every day, every meeting, they do. So if there's something that needs to be changed with with how we how we are able to approve this or approve that. I would encourage folks, give them a call, they'll listen to you.
Come to our meetings.
Come to the meetings. But if there's something that we need to do. With our with our our resoning or whatever, come see them. They can bring it to us as a recommendation. But um. I I I just, I I I I just want to say that. That it is, it's it's not an easy thing. My biggest thing with anything, if anybody's listening to me, is traffic. And that's my biggest issue and 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 I I understand, we they have nothing we can do. Because they approved, well, they approved one out here where you got a blind spot coming out for subdivision. So there's not a lot that we as a town can do because we're hamstrung. So I for the citizens of Wilsonville, I apologize as well.
Anyone else who can speak? I always live in public hearings. Now, we've got some questions that we can be known.
I do think, well, just something there about the record that. Uh, the plan one does a very valuable task, looking over the fine detail. The future land use map, the the details of having. Probably develop that for thirty three zone. And case like this, they set out, condition that they think appropriate, so they they form a very valid service, but. The approval or denial of recommendation of. And it comes to the government, this council, the final decision, you have discretion to. As to the these, the motion that was handed up, motion lemon A, if you think that you should have a form of vote to. Um, allow that or not, my recommendations that are denied, that you consider all evidence that's been submitted. Uh, to the board, to the council and public comments. That it's a two town council consideration.
Okay, I made the motion that we denied the motion in lemon A. Never ran in favor of the decision we don't.
That's it. Just so unclear. I believe the memorandum is accepted. Rude documents are accepted with the board, we certainly jury by the arguments in favor of the reason which are in. I simply speak to the request that evidence be excluded, and I'm suggesting that we deny that. But just eliminate, right?
Okay, I'm trying to try to move and. Reintroduce my motion, between allow motion, uh. And certainly.
Councilman Brown made the motion, Councilman Truett, that's out with a power in favor.
File.
File a vote.
Followed up in the state of the decision to be with the competition and the freedom of the U D O future land use plans. Correcting laws and the regional laws with the competition and the U D O. The new system of management, I think, motion to approve the reason of personalizing one seven K zero eight zero two two fail. Johnson Farm and A G, we can see the the following division. Minimum fifty two foot wide lock given for soon to ban homes. Minimum twenty two foot wide lock to the town home. A twenty foot setbacks to town homes and allow for random parking. One additional parking space, we have agreed town homes to allow for more off street parking. I hear that all changes required by the planning department, towns engineers, and the fire departments office. No businesses in this development, install cameras and strategic locations in the building.
Motion made through rezonant property. Uh, Councilman Truett, seconded by Councilman John, all in favor. At this time, we're going to follow five minutes process.
Councilor, do they need to do a separate? Motion for the second.
Second. Yeah, right.
And and public hearing and public.
So we're gonna have to open the public hearing and forward the speed once you. And unless anybody have enough public comment, and handles different affected are, but I think it will be sufficient to. We should say say simply say, we say reinforce a break about it, should follow the fire.
So we got, and we've got second part of the chance to find out. So. We are and call for a public hearing for rezonant property. Most of the cases we were. To citizen.
Yeah, they have to convey some heads again, we'll stipulate the same presentation of the issues and evidence that we gave for first parcel. Being for consideration of site.
Anyone? Anyone else who can say on the reasoning of this part?
I make a motion, uh, Rob's ready.
Yeah, I'm gonna close, and I'm just waiting to make sure that I.
I don't.
I close up here, okay.
I make a motion to approve rezonant partial ID one seven K ten zero eight zero two six, Johnson Farms. While adopting the statement of consistency with the comprehensive land use plan, U D O. Future land use map and recognizing the reasons with the comprehensive land use plan, U D O, and future land use map. I make a motion to approve the rezonant partial ID one seven K ten zero eight zero two six. Also known as Johnson Farms from A G to M U, that's C Z with the following condition. A minimum fifty two foot wide lock with for a single family. Minimum twenty two foot wide lock with a for town homes. A twenty foot setback for town homes to allow for ample parking. One additional parking space for every three town homes to allow for more off street parking. And here to all changes required by the planning department, towns engineers, and the fire marshal's office. No business in this development, install cameras and strategic locations in the building.
Motion made by Councilman Brown, seconded by Councilman John, all in favor. All vote. Now, we're going to follow five minutes process.
In the U D O or?
No, it's no, it's not a U D O, it was one of the divisions listed on there.
We should have.
Yeah.
Uh, they've already got Johnson Farm. Because there's no infrastructure there, we gotta use, we gotta use soul.
Well, nails the town through the jury. Yeah. Nail it up to the best. I had. The wind. How's it started? No, no, no. So we. But. What I did is American. Or anybody that's. Other world. So it's. I'm. Oh, yeah. No, we're. All. So. So we're. Tell them. Tell them.
Oh, yeah. That's. Mark. People are. Yeah, they're coming in.
No, there's.
Sure does.
Patrick. Well, maybe. I think. So.
It's like. You're. The. Oh, yeah. I'm. Oh, yeah. We can go. Yeah. Both. Probably.
Dave. Yeah, you gotta consider. You know what you know.
I know what I am. And it's real important. Always what you want.
How long you been? We know what. Yeah. Yeah. And if we. That's my. But then. And that's. And so.
No, I don't.
They got concerned on your door. They were in your head.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
I, I. I'm a lot of great. Well. They're doing well now, okay, it's been thirty years as well. I feel. They mean, I'm thinking that the mind. Do you? Yeah. You know. You know. We're.
But what we done, sir?
Yeah.
Maybe it's one way.
Always be an arm. I can change that. I'm going to do, I'm going to change that. I am what I am, right, chief? I am what I am. Oh, yeah, you know, let me, let me answer you. I mean, obviously, given this a lot of experience, but I know you said.
Mr. Jay City. Jay City, they said they were broke with N F P.
I'm glad you got another offer for me. I, I, I'm really appreciative. You know, I said, Danny, you look at it like, I'm gonna say more. No, I'm not gonna say, I'm glad you're doing that, I'm glad you got an extra function. There's. Stand there.
Hey.
And. Well, I was. You're awesome. My.
Oh, of course.
Have.
Had it.
It's up.
He is.
Seven jump button on it. Yeah.
You need advice, right?
Please. Yeah, absolutely, that's okay. Hold it.
Okay.
It wasn't my lady.
Didn't cross the line, but said much longer.
Well, I told her already. Be long. I, I had two pages, seriously, I had a lot of those.
An hour and a half was really not good.
What are you doing?
My calling oil.
That's what I mean, if you're rubbing on my stomach.
Well, I'm gonna rub it on the stomach, but I give it totally be on my. You can rub it on, you can rub it on. This recording is gonna be semi-stuntalistic.
That, that'll take.
Oh, yeah. Oh, is it, it's still running, yeah. Strike that clerk, please.
That data is.
Yeah. I know. We put. We're. It's on the. Got a. Which is. It wasn't. But. Tree. Yeah.
It was. Funny. And. Six. They were trying to read.
No, we tabled him up there with doing what we charged him a march. Okay. Think you got my text. Yep. What'd you get? Better one. You're right there. I mean. Thanks, buddy. I told you, man.
Yeah.
Long. We have. Sure.
It wasn't true?
Yeah.
Really? It's too bad.
Okay. Oh, they were ninety over. Okay. There you go. Shit.
Okay. It's time for the first day of four, if you want to watch. President's meeting. Four, second. For any comments. I'm posing the word to the one of the neighbors. Thank you. I don't know the judgment, his comments from your mayor, and I just. I'd like. I just like to, to make some comments. Uh. It's been made, uh, tonight, we are the first small name. Watsonville is our small name. Uh, with all the growth, it's coming when you enter shape for the trees in place. We want to be growing with our leaves to land. And we have to be ready, which I don't think. We can't wait to be able to get here, but okay, now we want to. Um, we're living in a transportation place, you know. Thing to talk about. We need to make sure that. As the planning board has been going over, that they are created. Because when this growth comes in, we gotta be ready. Because it will change the pace of growth. And if we're not ready for it, it's gonna be a mess. So I just want council to remember that there's gonna be a lot of things coming for us. We need to make sure that we look out. That we judge them correctly, all the citizens of our town. And we put them together so that it's beneficial and fun. Because we need to be prepared. That's all. Yeah.
If I, if I make a comment? Am I allowed to make a comment?
You are.
Or should I, where your councilman?
I'll make a comment.
I'm just gonna say, it's a take you back, you're saying, and I, I was looking at this earlier, and I said, with our projected growth of. Two hundred and fifty next to town hall, four hundred and some off of the, probably the southern, southern. Five hundred and some here, a thousand over off Brooklyn. They're gonna go, they get built, they get sold, we're gonna be time gate ball, if we don't really focus on increasing the police. And our director maintenance office. And, and Wendy's office do these things that citizens, you probably demand, they're gonna be here in full, in full case to go to over to. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay. The first item that I have on the agenda. Is the additional services agreement number two from three ten A I, and this is for. If you'll remember at your May twenty-eighth work session, you discussed the addition of work on the front entrance to remove the existing glass vestibule and add a covered walkway to match the new entrance building. Entrance that was being built into the council chambers. Um, that is in your packet, it's pretty straightforward, if you'll remember from the original agreement. These are the items that we are. Paying three ten to do on the work that's being done also in the council chambers. So this is the additional work to be done on that front portion of it. Um, if you have any questions, Paul Fox, you've all met him from three ten, he is here to answer those questions for you, again, it's very straightforward. Um, agreement, so if you have question?
I have a question. This will be covered, nor one.
What?
So. A lot of the side walk is long to. But it's wanna change that.
We can change our. This will be. Sort of. That, um, that outdoor cover on, to be increasing the. Go a lot like when it. Extend out. This should so captures the town hall sign, the example we listed there, that's not the final one, but it's not. Kid, not. I have a good thought, actually, they get things hit and sales with the black and white, it's. I don't know which ones I'm looking at here, I don't know, the front entrance and side entrance. The first one, though, page, well, no page, but first black and white.
These copies did not come out very well for the council. This, um, this first picture is actually, if you are coming down the road. No, wait. No, the first picture. Is of what the front of the building would look like.
There is, and it says.
If you're standing.
Right.
With your seventy to your back and you're looking.
Mm-hmm. So that's, that's, that's. So the vestibule is down. And there's a white wall, and so this is covered walkway extends all the way out into the, uh, turn area.
Yeah. Wow. Just. Wow. Let me, hold, hold on just a second, I've got the.
Actually, that goes very fast, and it's all sort of. Fast, but I could just gave them certain elements to chase on.
I only have the one copy. That's colored, but it's very dark. Some of them. Pass it down.
Three, my copy could much better.
They are, yeah, but our copy are just getting copied them very well, but if you wanna look at that and pass it down, we can.
That's. Take it to us. Yeah. We are considering this. All the way out. Drive. Maybe that could say less. Is that right?
I'm sorry.
From the building, setting it up here. And the garage from under here, under here, all the way around.
No, you're, right now, you're actually looking at, like, if you're coming down the road. Down our, our road. From public works.
Under here. So, so we're coming like down the launch, then. Okay, so the old, the old drive to the building would be over this way?
Right.
Oh, okay, so this is the town. We're talking here, right? The chambers is only other end of the building. Yeah. Chambers, oh, okay, so then, this is, this is from the, the main parking lot and the front door, that's okay, is there's room to drive around in the front? Yes. Yes, the front. What is, what's the purpose of this thing, don't care.
So if the purpose of this, I imagine behind the second sheet. This is what you say.
What is that?
And so that when people drive up, they know where the entrance is, right now, and we shouldn't go all the way around the entrance. So we. Does that make sense?
Well, this is it. And what is, what are these things, the, the?
The driver building, the driving.
Yeah, and this was the frame.
So it comes across and covers the whole walkway all the way around to the front of the building.
Okay, all right.
Then.
Yeah. Sorry, everybody.
In the bottom, this is its concept, this is enough, um, so you all get to play a part in what we're tackling about for. What we did, we took the sad, what we call, as you're driving in, the mayor, the local chairman. Here to see the town hall, you want to be able to easily identify, and since. So you can be sawed right up the buildings, it's, you know, right through.
But Paul, you were saying you're gonna start with the last page, and that does give you a better idea from the front. That's how it's gonna look.
You have a very loud. Of the.
Sorry. We've got the mics as loud as they will go, and I'm very sorry, but the acoustics in here are not great. That we've got them loud, and if we do it anymore, it's gonna start squealing, so everybody just try to speak up, if you will.
Well, it's still say Wilson's build across the front of town hall. That is to be done. Yes. On the design. Okay. That's gonna be that right now, that's the last. Yeah. Okay.
That, that will be part of the sign.
Right, all right.
It'll have to be signed now. You know, how we. Going like. I like the idea, it was, it was all, all about. And I like the idea, which is. Change. I think.
Well, in, in building development, it works out, we, we, we do branding, council, that'll be all work, that's gonna be, we got plenty of work. Um, again, this is just the concept diagram, just to show something that.
Paul, what kind of, uh, building materials are we looking at, are we looking at, um. Wood or steel coming down supports and then a asphalt type roof, or just a metal thing?
It, um, all, everything is sealed, um, it will be sealed, there's a center column. Um, and middle, uh, to keep it crossed out, it's in the center column, middle all the times, it'll be an entire, um, sealed structure.
Okay.
Now, and we are unsure, the underside may be wood. That would sign that it may be wood, the faith of purpose you see.
Do you take into consideration when you build these things that are freestanding with a daunting like that? Um, winds and tolerance?
Absolutely, the fittings on these are quite large.
And with the roofs, that's what typically blowed out.
Right, there's a center beam all the way down the middle, right, it's, I mean, they are individual beams that extend out like a letterbox shape. We do think that.
Or is it, is it, but is there any kind of a certification by anybody that when it's finished, it should withstand winds of up to whatever?
People, for, for this, for this area, uh, when there are many people, it will be based, yes, exactly.
There are standards for that.
Okay, you're good, okay. Throughout the year, we have a lot of work. Definitely.
Okay, good, thank you, thank you very much.
All right, my turn. Okay, we using the same civil engineers, structural engineers, electric engineers, the rescue. Or. She did that out, so, so. Okay, um. So my, I guess my, my, my question is, is that same. Architect. And that same structural engineer. Architect is on the charge of twenty-six thousand additional dollars. For that home. It's not just the one, except the carpet, um, and the building, you're removing that's building, there's a large carpet there, it's seen that all, it's removed and everything is on. I, I, I think. And, and then the civil, civic as well, we land it, it be curbing there. That may change, but there are fittings that are coming, we can support that. So. If they understand, we get the utility as well, then. They're, they're working, because I was about to call it and navigate it, have it.
Any, your brother. Their volume, where they come in this.
Oh, they, they, they're pretty.
Any surprises yet with being halfway through, things that shocked you a little bit, no fun intended with the electric, anybody?
Uh, I don't know that it's just the right one.
Okay, everybody.
Yeah, but we could, we make some of that in the, in the.
I, I have, I have a couple of questions about numbers I'm looking at. Cost estimate. That means whether it's, while we're being three thousand dollars, we need a cost estimate.
That is our cost estimate consultant, and if you recall, we did bring on an estimated consultant, who were, who their first estimate, and then on the first part of this is due to us next week. So that'll help us understand what this is going to phase A is in the cost. Their participation, it is something to try, understanding of the subtle parts, which I, actually, you all need to know, as we're moving forward, to make sure we can afford, we can afford to do the product.
Yeah, I mean, I keep seeing they give thousands of this, I'm, I'm sort of one of them, so. These, these, the cost, both are the ones that keep in tune with the, with happening in the industries and corrupt labor and arts and pieces.
Right. Yeah, they're, they're, a lot of the consulting, we work with them on university projects, and this is what they do every day.
Okay.
All right, what's next? Then they. Try to explain to me the construction administration for fourteen thousand.
That's the architects and all the civil engineers and stuff that are very on the line. Addition for us to do the construction administration, put a sentimental review and.
And that's, that's, that's why I'm gonna split here, Tom. All right, we're paying architect twenty-six thousand dollars. So you're telling me a part of this construction administration, that administration is going to architect for his administration?
It's moving all the.
I made a wrong business, I am totally in wrong business. Over the, and that's most what I need to do. Except, so. So, so when I, so you're telling me that these broken down. The fourteen thousand dollars for construction and administration. Everybody gets a little portion of that fourteen thousand for their administrative city.
That's okay, we're justifying administration, it's, it's, it's high value construction administration, it is people, both reduce metal, and the. People. About to make sure that general contact is provided, when it's supposed to be provided, it's still.
Over the side. Over the side, why? Definitely. Well, I, I recall, I recall at some point in time. If I recall, some point in time, you were, you were really doing something, and it wasn't that one, keeping track, and you were. And so you were not visibly upset, you were very. And so you were not visibly upset, you were very concerned that there wasn't anybody keeping, there's someone stuff. And here we've got somebody keeping their thumb on stuff, and we do have to say that.
And, and, and you're correct. But our contract is with Mr. Fox. I would have made, I, I had assumed that we're contracting with him, so he would be able to see this stuff. But every time we get something in front of us, there's additional call here, I mean, I can understand the, 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 the structural engineer. Having an engineer that own and, and all this other stuff and architect, and I can even understand the, the, the upgrade they can do. But, but, so, so, so who, who are we paying? Can you tell me who we do?
Retent AI, it's, they are the architects.
Okay, my, um, is three ten mark, that's correct, you're paying us, we hire all of these consultants, it sits out for the profit, for, for all of them.
I, I would just, I, I, I do have one more question before we move on from this, do we know beforehand how much we're up to, we approved this? Numbers.
Just had the.
Because I mean, we're making eighty-eight thousand, now we're pretty what, last, last night, last month, thirty-three thousand, I mean, we've just gone over a hundred K.
Hold on, I just had it out, sorry.
I mean, the, the reason I ask that is because if, if, if we keep going, if we keep, keep chasing this rabbit. Eventually, we're, we're gonna be in the hole.
This additional project is option, if this is something you wanna do, it's not like where they found an issue that we need to fix. Bracing or what, I mean, that's still coming up too, don't forget that.
That's right.
If this project isn't anything you wanna add to this, then that's what you need to decide. But that's what this amount, that's, that's what this amount is for, is to engineer and design that part of the project. So, if you don't wanna do that, that's.
And I want to make sure council understands that's not to construct.
Correct.
I mean, this is just so they can put their two cents or, we're spending eighty-eight thousand dollars. To design, and all, I mean, I guess it's more than all, that's what I see.
Do we have, Paul, do we have the option later on, if we, if we kinda table this? You know, you're, you're not stuck in, quick say, you don't wanna do the other things that you do, is there the option to come back to this later on?
Yes, there is the option to come back and do.
When we look, yeah, when we look and see what's been spent so far and, and where we can go with it, maybe we, as an option, we can jump back to that.
I have it here, your original contract was for one hundred and seventy-two thousand. The site surveying was thirty-three, is that correct? And then this portion of, the, the second portion of the project that we discussed would be eighty-eight.
And just, um, particularly fresh, your site survey was to benefit, uh, what we're doing.
And the master.
For the master.
Correct. That was for the whole site.
Yes, yes, uh, so the money wise, then with those numbers she gave us, that leaves fifty-one thousand.
Leaves fifty-one thousand.
We, we wedged a hundred and seventy-two, we put out thirty-three last meeting and this time it's eighty-eight.
The hundred and seventy-two was the original project.
Right.
The thirty-three is for the site survey for the entire campus.
Okay, so, so, so you're, if, if we approve this, we're two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars in, in, in the happen, we hadn't turned this through.
There's nothing spent in construction. I mean, if, if, and if you guys are just, I mean, but, but we're talking about two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars that I carried by one. Um, and, and, and we hadn't started anything, we hadn't even got thirty-three thousand dollars worth that we spent last month with utilities located. So, once you do that, then, then we're gonna have to spend money to build something. And we just voted increased taxes because it didn't happen, not a month, I'm just saying.
To get your feet wet for the police department, because this penny's compared to what that's gonna be.
So are, with that, with that, what would you say, two hundred and ninety-three? Two ninety-three, are we, are we within the grant or what's the grant amount?
The full grant amount.
Three million.
Three million.
And we're gonna do police out of that.
No, we're gonna design the police.
Design, not, not terms.
This is design and, and we'll come out.
So what if, what, we're at two hundred and ninety-three, what, what do you think it's gonna commit at? What are your cost estimators saying after, if we approve this? We'll not know from next. Uh, not the cost estimating, I apologize. Then I, then I, I don't know about you guys, but I would prefer that we, we hold off on approving this until we get that kind of figure in next, next month, I guess, right? Where are you gonna commit it, special meeting, uh, next week's meeting?
At the work session?
Yes.
I would, I would rather not have any other i- items on the work session, because July and August, we need to finish this master plan. And last, last month, when we did that, and we, we ended up having to start an hour earlier because of all the.
Well, the interview with that, and I, I, I hate to put things off and kick it down the road, but. But the logic tells me that we need to wait until next month and let a figure comes in, because that's a, that's a hefty chunk right there. Is that okay?
Yeah, comparatively, yeah.
Then we can figure out what we wanna do, but that doesn't stop you, you're still going forward with other things.
You're still looking forward, it, it helps our team.
Right.
To do start of work sooner, obviously, you know.
Yeah.
Work for the other, it just helps the team, it's getting the overall, potentially to do both of these products at the same.
Alright, what about council mayor, um, I, I say we hold off for, for mid next week. Really? Great. Alright, I make the motion, we, uh, we, uh, I don't even know what I'm making, I'm working about, right now. That's not it.
This is something that we need really soon, because if we, if we jump out there and say, okay, we're ready for it, and. We don't feel like we are, then later we'll say we're not, unless, we have some bounce, let's put it off. Put your back there.
Well, I, I love the idea, don't, I, I, I think, I think we need something for people to pull under, I, I, I love it. From what I, from what I can see over here, it's a good concept, I love it. Um, I, I don't love the figures on it. I think you'll do the same thing and do about many things.
Alright, so I'll, I'll go ahead and do it, and I'll go ahead and make a motion that we follow the phone until, but that we defer to the next meeting. In, in August, the, uh, is that the Wilsonville Town Hall Chamber's uplift additional services agreement number two? That cover it?
Yes.
Yeah, table, I'm sorry, table is until next, uh, next meeting, the, uh, Wilsonville Town Hall Chamber uplift additional services agreement number two has been done.
Actually, they, they, yeah, that was, uh, Captain Brown to table, here's our next meeting, our favor.
Alright.
Thank you for being here, Paul, through all the, the brief meeting. So, uh, first of all, I want to make sure that everybody understands that this is, um, a different. Study than what the county has been working on for the past year or so. The county had its own study done about some regionalization information. Um, this is the group, if you remember back several months ago. Who passed a resolution for the mayor and I to attend these meetings with other representatives from each one of the towns from Johnson County. And the reason for doing this is because of the growth and all of the expansion in Johnson County. The municipality's gotten together and wanted to form the study group. To talk about the future of water and sewer, within the county and within each municipality in the county. So with, with our situation, with the county still maintaining. All of our water and sewer and owning all of the water lines and us having our, our own feasibility study right now. Wilson's Mills has been at this table just to make sure that we're included on what's going on, what's happening. So that whenever we get done with our feasibility study, which should be done by September. Then we'll kinda know where we fit in there, as far as what the county's gonna want us to do, either taking over the utilities. Or them continuing to do it with some other kind of agreement, we don't know what that's gonna look like yet until we finish our study. So I just wanted to put that out there, that's why we've been at the table for this meeting. But it's, um, basically because of all of the growth and all of the issues that each one of the towns who, who do operate their own utility systems. They're having issues with capacity or costs, and a lot of this study has been about how it would benefit everybody. To regionalize, regionalize in some way, in the form of a water and sewer authority. Okay, so that's why they've been looking at all of this, and you can read through the handout, it gives the, the reasons that we've talked about. That are important for collaborating, sharing ideas, sharing risks, taking advantage of. The economy right now and the costs, sharing costs. Um, when you work as a group with a water and sewer authority. You're, you're having more of a benefit for receiving grants and permits from the state for water. So these are a lot of the reasons that, that everybody's kinda come together to do this study. Um, right now, there are a lot of agreements and collaborations between towns and between towns and county. Um, and those are listed there on that page for you, just to show that there's already some collaboration going on. Um, but this would give an opportunity for more collaboration, so that the communities can come together and share more of those costs and benefits. Um. Were you about to say something from your thoughts? Um. Okay.
We have had very good participation on all of the municipalities, Johnson County. And these meetings, on the people sitting around the table, we were talking about the needs for all of the counties. Consider block the best way to handle the water supply. There are some. There are some, some of the towns that are collaborating, doing what they want to do at the time, and. It's, it's very, uh, unusual, they've been with the county members, and they all are thinking to agree with each other. Um, and that's what happened, in bringing some of our towns together, so, I think that is a good.
Well, you know, that page, before we go further, can I add one, one quick question on self-identity authority on the regionalization? I noticed it says no control except to negotiate the voting rights by entities. Um, does that mean things gonna have more votes than Wilson's Mills, or, you know, getting?
Not necessarily, but yes, and that has been, that has been a big topic of conversation, just because if an authority is formed. Anyone who chooses to join that authority, the, the founding guidelines and, and policies for that authority. Have to be created, and voting rights would be one of them, what, what's the weight of the vote, is it for capita, is it? Um, landmass, is it? Line mileage, you know, it, so there are a lot of different ways that you can do it, and we've had central cons, regional council has been facilitating some of these meetings. And we've had legal counsel on some of this information as well, we've had people from the school of government at these meetings. But we felt like, and the reason that we're bringing this to you now, is that we felt like there's been enough conversation about it, that. We just wanna make sure that everybody is getting the same information, and that they understand the same. The same things that we're talking about at these meetings, that it's not, you know, what was said at the amen corner on Wednesday morning. You know what I mean? So, we're just trying to make sure everybody's got the same information.
This material has been sent out to all of them as well.
Right, right.
Same, of your things. I was the one that asked it, because I told you that I probably knew something that you could bring back to the county. That you would know what Smithville is doing, you would know what. So that we would all know the same information, and this is what we're hoping to do, so this is what we ended up doing, was following up.
And questions such as that are some of the things that would have to be decided. Whenever the guidelines for this board are created. Um, and that we're not at that point yet, in fact, before an authority could ever be formed, it would probably be at least three to five years down the road. Before the authority was formed and running efficiently.
And it had to, to give you some background, it has to go through a legislature, be set up, and it's going to buy, much like a town has.
Exactly.
So if you'll, if you'll turn the next page, that it actually shows you what, what this three-year, potential three-year timeline could mean. This doesn't mean this is what we're starting with and we're moving forward with this, that's, this is what the potential for a three-year timeline would be. Establishing policy committee, technical advisory committee, those are the types of things that, um. That you're kinda talking about right now, developing stakeholder engagement plans, so knowing who is gonna be involved and who would not. There may be some that jump in in the beginning and say, we're ready to go, we're ready to move forward, and some others may say, well, we're gonna wait till it's developed. And then we, we might wanna jump in later, um, but again, this is a little different for Wilson's Mills, because. The county, we're still under the county where that's concerned, and we don't know how that's gonna change until our study is completed. And we negotiate that with the county ourselves, so we're also, I mean, the county is at these meetings as well, so they know that. We're kind of in a different situation, because everybody else is already operating and maintaining their own utility.
And if you remember that they came to us some time ago, and our attorneys had over two, three, four, five times, they agreed that they wanted us to sign. They have put that on hold to some of this stuff, so.
Right.
Then we agreed to go to a attorney.
Have we had to put any money into this yet, out of the town?
The town has not, who is paying for this study by CPRC is the mayor's association. So their dues and a contribution from the county, because they don't have a mayor, were split evenly. Um, and, and so, because we also wanted to make sure that it was, it was fair and equitable, that all of the towns. The mayors were putting in this, this amount of money, the counties putting in the same amount of money, so, so it's not weighted, it's not one-sided.
We also make sure that we have proof that this organization is gonna be, uh, together, as municipal government would. Is it gonna be fashioned to have potential fines, in other words, well, you said legislative ones, they have votes and taxing, and this will not have that.
So, you're, you're talking about a water and sewer authority?
Yeah.
Um, that, that may be another whole meeting topic, but, yes, and. To put it plainly, they are kinda like the cog where they're set up as a mun, as a separate municipality to have a board, a clerk. Correct, correct, and so in order to get to that point, all of these things would have to be done, we'd have to establish this committee. Develop the, who's gonna be engaged, who the stakeholders are, a, an organizational structure. And then start with like some draft interlocal agreements, um, and then start initiating. This, what this organization would look, would look like, and so all of that would be done with legal counsel, with this group.
That's one of the first things that I would have.
And, and then even in the beginning of this stages, Wilson's Mills is at the table, we're listening, we're getting this information, we can answer these questions for you. But we don't really have a foot in the door right now, just because we don't own our water. And we only own a portion of our sewer and the county maintains it all right now. So until that changes, we're just at the table.
But I'm pretty close to the door of the office block. They don't know anything.
Yeah, that is, correct, as of now. Um, and then this goes on to show you what years two and three could look like, once, once, um. They would keep moving forward towards an, an authority, it would, it shows you also what an organizational flowchart may look like for that. Um. And again, the council would. I don't, I don't wanna get too much in the weeds, but this organizational flowchart would show you that if we, when we go into it, that's what it would be. If we go into it, if we decide this is what we wanna do. Um.
And to, to understand, we would not have, I mean, we could keep it like this now, with an agreement with the county. But it may be something that once we did our study done, they won't. But it may be something that once we did our study done, they won't be a part of it because we don't have any of the system. And so we may want to change things up with that zone.
There, there is a, a lot, a lot of stuff involved with the way ours is tied in with the county right now. So that's gonna come to you after we get our feasibility study. Right now, what their plan is, is to, there are some of the towns who are in distress in some areas. And they feel the need to go ahead and start working together. Ones that are close, that their, their lines can match up and they want to work together on sharing risks and costs and stuff. And so they're looking at drafting interlocal agreements among themselves while this is in the background, still working on the full authority. So that's what's happening right now, they're, they're working on their collaboration and what they need to do with one town or another. The ultimate goal, of course, is to make sure that everybody's got clean water, efficient sewer, the rates are fair. That's, that's the ultimate goal for this is so that everybody across the county can have that. The immediate next steps, they wanted to reaffirm who was gonna be committed, committed right now to collaboration. Again, that's not us because we're not in control of ours right now. And then to establish policy and technical advisory committee. And those are the types of decisions that we're being involved in right now because we're at those meetings, we're at the table and we have a voice in that because it is something that could affect us in the future. Even though we're not collaborating with other towns, we still have a voice in how this board is being created. So. And then, that, that is an update of what's going on. We, I would be happy to try to answer any more questions about it, but for us right now, it really just kind of hinges on what our sewer and water and sewer feasibility study that we're having done right now is gonna, like, where that's gonna lead us with the county.
Are we getting any kind of a person?
No, in fact, just as the mayor just said, since we've been having these conversations, they have backed off of this pressure of you need to take it over, you need to take it over. And they're, you know, obviously they haven't put that in writing, it's still up in the air. But everybody's just kind of waiting on us to finish this water and sewer feasibility so that we know where we're gonna go with the county. But if this is a strong possibility, then we've been told that they're kind of willing to back off of that for right now until we get everything straight with this. So, because everybody at the table and, and a lot of the board members from the other towns feel like this is a really good idea and it's gonna be fair and equitable to everybody in the county, there may be some changes that are not so great in some towns, but then that'll balance out over the years once it's running smoothly, so.
Are you feeling any animosity on the parts of the other folks that have gone in despite this? Unlike us, you know, we got a voice at the table, but we don't have.
None at all.
Right now.
None at all. Archalodge is at the table as well.
Yeah.
It affects everybody in the county. And at some point, you know, even, even in the archalodge area and the unincorporated areas that are really big in the county are not sitting at the table, but they're part of the county and the county's at the table, so. Everybody has, this has been, these have been really, really good meetings, they've been, everybody's been.
Everybody is talking, that's what's something that we have not heard in a while. We have two representatives from each town, most of the mayors and the cabinet administrator and manager. Some council. We sit around the table and we talk, and that's something that I think is very important because we're all talking about the same things, like water and sewer for the whole county.
Who's running it for the county, Bill, which one? Do you run the business?
Rich and Dickie.
Dickie. So we'll keep you up informed as we get more updates, but just know that right now, we're, we're just, we're at the table until we get our sewer feasibility back. And an update on that, we had been waiting for some information from the county for them to send to our engineers, TRC, who are working on this project. And they are running behind on that, so rather than finishing at the August meeting, we'll probably be giving you that presentation at the September meeting. We have another meeting with TRC on July thirty-first. And we'll hopefully have the rest of that information from the county. This next item is under Wendy's, but I, I think it was actually supposed to be on mine. Wendy, do you want me to go ahead and explain to them? Okay, this is, we had originally planned to bring you something to amend some of the ordinances that we have that have been codified because they changed when we adopted the UDO. And we can't do that tonight because we have to hold a public hearing on most of these because they were created with a public hearing. So in order to change them or repeal them, you have to have a public hearing to do that. So rather than adopting this ordinance, we're gonna ask you if you will call a public hearing for the August meeting to review, to review and adopt this ordinance. That would be August nineteenth. And the August meetings will be here at the church, even though they may be done over there. We're gonna wait until school's started and they're running smoothly before we move. So August meetings will also be here as a church.
I'll make a motion, I'll read, it's called a public hearing for our next meeting, August nineteenth of twenty twenty-four regarding an ordinance movement, Wilson's Mills' power of ordinances and.
Wendy, do you have anything else?
Okay, that's all we have.
I was just like, so, kind of thinking back on what Dave said, you know, entertaining the mayor, what we know is coming, what we don't know is coming in as we're growing, but we're not only gonna need additional planning and, and plates off, but we're gonna need additional support staff. For all of that, and all of that, so as we go forward, we need to keep that in mind. And if we need to begin, in the budget, next budget process, we need to begin putting any money back in case this council does, or future council does, in return to the utility agreement, or whatever it's called. We need to use that, that, I got three hundred and thirty-three.
It's not, and that's, that is something that we need to look at because we do not have any. And you're talking about big groups, you're not talking about really.
So costs for all of that are also gonna be in your study.
Yeah, I don't need to talk about to be a part of.
I just want to say thank you all. It's not easy, there's some market activity, but I thank you all for your support.
By the way, we got, we got something. Second, I'll perform and then put, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, all right.
I know y'all raised taxes this year. Next, nobody's paying taxes for what's not done. They're gonna have a million dollar operation and it's not cheap. But I agree with Dave. We don't give a hunk of model. It would be lost. We need a backhoe. They need a two-ton truck. They need another man. You need a mechanic. And you're talking about five, six hundred thousand dollars that y'all need in the next couple of years. You be thinking about it when building three elections. Moving three cents every year, y'all people there not following. And I agree with you, Dave.
Make a motion, we go with it.
Motion made during the vote session. Thank you, by the way, the council, thank you by council, John.